Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Tiggerman Planning Board's special workshop. It is Thursday, October 30th, 2025. We will begin with role Cheryl Valentine.
President.
Jenny Stones.
President.
Dick Taylor.
President.
Rosemary Eva.
President.
Stu Hart.
President.
I'm Bill Berlach. We have several members at the boards who are unable to join us this evening. But we do have also joining us here tonight is Todd Limano, our Assistant Solicitor and Planning Board Counsel. We have Edward Kella, our Lanies Clerk, and Ashley Sweet, who is our interim Membership Officer and Consulting Planner from Weston and Sampson. They'll be joining us momentarily. So this evening, not a formal meeting, but again, a workshop. This picks up where we left off in late September in terms of doing some of the more sort of nitty gritty required work to keep our ordinances in tip top shape here. So we have a rather lengthy agenda. We're going to keep plugging away at this to get through, make sure we're comfortable, get clear on next steps as it relates to advertising for public hearings or review, being able to move this stuff on to the town council, so on and so forth there. I'd like to try and wrap this evening by nine or nine thirty at the latest. The last time we went until ten or a little bit after and it became counterproductive in terms of our ability to make folks. So in any case, you're good, Todd? Miranda jump in?
Yes.
We can start with zoning ordinances. I think we should run through a lot of these very quickly because we did discuss these at the last workshop. I've tried making improvements where I identified and also I put it some quick notes where you need to make some decisions. At the end of the zoning ordinance section, I'm going to ask that we try to schedule a meeting to formally decide when the planning board should meet to make a recommendation to the town council on the zoning ordinance amendments. You would be glad.
Will we be actually doing motions to approve the decisions we've made together?
Yeah, which is at a workshop.
This is just a workshop.
Make sure that we have the language that you want it, want it.
Okay.
So when we see it again, hopefully just say fantastic. Yep. And we get us to the public hearing so that we can go through and take the vote, be able to pass a positive recommendation on the town council. Hopefully with full discussion, right? Not, not discussion, discussion. Don't get me wrong. Just hope we get it all cleared up tonight. I don't think it's a lot of quick checks before we get too far. Audio was good.
Yes, we're recording.
All right. So page one, as you know, is my style. I have the cover page identifying for you and the council eventually what the amendments are. First one being definitions, first removal. If we discussed this last time, it just refers back to the code ordinances to make those consistent. Transition rules. I hope we've had an opportunity to review these now. Any questions about these? And again, this is just to try to help people understand the status of their property and their uses and then when, when ordinances change. I went through this. I thought it was good because it creates, there's basically a response to every potential scenario here. So we have everything covered. I didn't really walk away from this thinking, hey, we don't have a use case that's not covered. So I feel like it's comprehensive. Thank you.
You know, I agree with you.
All right. So with that, I'm trying to keep us moving forward. Right on. District Use Regulations. This one was not included in the last package. This, this issue came up recently with a young woman, I understand, who has or wants to have a personal fitness center in a waterfront two zone. It's not a full fledged gym, is my understanding. Not that that, that this use would permit a full fledged gym, but this one, again, is just a personal fitness track. It needs space to do that. So I was asked to make some amendments. Totally up to you what you want to do.
I, I, I think it's fine. I have no problem with this at all. I don't think an athletic facility is in any way incompatible with what on waterfront two. You know, in fact, it's maybe tied to business. That could be right. So, so absolutely, let's, you know, I, I recommend it shouldn't be, let's.
Yeah. I mean, the boutique, boutique personal fitness training sort of.
It's a, it's, it's.
It's a thing. It's a growing.
It is a, it is popular.
They're small, they're contained. No. This one is a regular gym though. Again, could, could include a regular gym. You do have size limitations within the waterfront districts, so. Yes, ma'am?
I have a problem. I'm not speaking to this as specifically, but actually, in some of these places, it's been overworked, especially if they're small. You know, resources in that building, I mean, that's the crazy, the location. You can go to the, I have no problem with emission drop.
No, that's a good point, Rosemary. That's, that's a great point. Let me see if we have performance standards that may address that. And I'm delighted to also introduce John Frank, our zoning officer is here, so he may be able to match things quickly down. I'm Mike. Hey, John.
This parking unit.
For this particular one. Do we have a parking?
Hang on. John, do you, do you want to get, if you're going to talk, do you want to get in front of a mic? I have a stand up panel here.
John, you can come right up here. We have a speaker mic right up here.
We, we got a little mic here. Yeah, that's, thank you. John, I don't want to talk about a specific project. No.
Just the use of a membership athletic club.
Correct.
And what standards you may want to have included in the ordinance if we don't already have this.
The only concern I had with the waterfront, one waterfront two was just the, the generalized use of, of this health club. The description in the ordinance currently is all encompassing of a membership health club. So. Racket club could be a, some type of other gym. This, this is more of a boutique kind of fitness training, smaller gym specifically that this is being discussed, but this opens it up to all of that availability on the waterfront.
I understand the use, but I'm, I'm very concerned about the location of some of these businesses, not this one specifically used.
Yeah. So, so Rosemary, we do have the performance standard requiring a parking plan with safe pedestrian circulation, marked crosswalks, parking areas, building entrances. So I think that we have a parking plan requirement. It, it may address your concern, but if you want something more, we can certainly discuss that.
I mean, because sometimes there are other businesses located there and it's not taken into consideration when the permit is given.
We have a shared parking ordinance. Do. Right?
Thank you.
It's a matter of enforcement. And, and your concern is that one, one parking for one use may crowd out.
Exactly.
Parking for other establishments. Yeah, that's, that's a.
Thank you.
Tough to.
It is, especially if it's quite small road or a street now and congested area. I mean, I like the use.
Yeah.
But seeing as they're.
Yeah, and I think your concern would be valid regardless of this particular use that we're talking. This is just, just happens to be a work for commentary.
And whoever gets the, the okay on it, maybe Mr. Frank will.
Yeah. So we, we have standards, right? Parking plan with safe pedestrian access required. It's just a question of sort of enforcement. Yeah, there.
Just because it was brought up.
Sure, Ashley.
Well, it didn't turn on. Just because it was brought up, I'll just make note that the parking, the shared parking in the zoning ordinance seems to only allow that in the general commercial zone.
Yeah.
Because it says in the general commercial zone, the following uses may utilize shared parking and then it actually restricts the uses. But we are going to look at the entire section on parking at the Zoning Revision Committee. And so that will, we'll have that discussion and we'll talk about ways to make that better.
So that'll, that'll bring back to us some sort of recommendation in the future.
And we should encourage that to the extent possible.
Our district gets down to a corner. They wanted to do a wedding condition and it was that. They had about, they had about seven different businesses and they kept trying to play share and park as well.
Yeah.
Wedding and park, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Charlie takes a moment. Off the. Rosemary, you're 100% correct about the parking concerns. I just made a note to make sure that I know actually I had that on my list. It's also on my list again. Great. So in the absence of that or in addition to that, are there any concerns about changing or adding this particular use as permitted by right in waterfront one to waterfront? So even if that, any of the performance standards that you may want for a membership athletic club.
I have another question. Do we have the hours specified here? Is it the six AM to one PM? Just because there's some close residential on structures.
That is not specified as a performance standard. But business licenses, I believe, have certain hours of provision.
We, we tended to stay away from putting that into the specific and objective criteria and the performance standards because of the licensing requirement and because there are other ordinances that talk about when businesses can operate. So we intentionally left that out of most of them. We didn't want to conflict.
Right. And town councils and licenses as well. Other board jurisdictions. So we steer clear of that.
Cheryl, is that?
That's not. I'll just second if the close houses, no problem.
Okay, good. We'll move on. We're up to prohibited uses. Okay, so I made a mistake last time in, in trying to fix the prohibited use of manufactured mobile homes. I had previously only had manufactured home called an elderly community. I should have also included the age restricted mixed use community there. So that's the intent that's changed since the last go. As to that portion, yes. And that makes sure that we have all of our bases covered. Try. Any questions about that? All right. I've added another prohibitive use based on conversations with John of compost facility and co-composting. I should probably further define this as be, as defined by D E M. But these are, these, this is not intended for backyard composting. Large facilities. Okay. And I know right M regs when it comes to composting, define certain levels of composting facilities based on the volume of material that they're turning every year. That's where I got those phrases from, actually, compost facility and co-compost. Okay, yeah, I definitely agree with the as defined by right M. And, and I don't know if it's even worth pointing to. I know they, they maintain a set of rights. Yes. Like to point to the specific. So I'll fix that. Okay.
We have a definition for mills.
For what?
Mills.
Mills? No.
That you added in there.
On adaptive reuse, you're skipping down, down already?
Well, it stands out. The title.
Get out of here.
It isn't.
Well, I'm excited tonight, guys. Are we good with now posting first? I think so. Okay. I do not have a definition for mills, Dick. If you think we need to define that, I suppose we can come up with something. But I think we want to endorse converting such structures. Yeah. I mean, is, is, are mills just like generally accepted sort of common? Have they existed? I think mills, I think sort of what we see is fall over and get better.
And we, initially, when we say mills, typically talking about textile mills, well textile mills that are appropriate for adaptive reuse. But maybe you should say mills slash factories that cover more ground and I'm not sure what the distinction is between a mill and a factory.
Well, this is coming right from state law.
What is?
They added the word mills last time because they were criticized for not including that. And that is the most obvious adaptive reuse project. And so they, they added the word mills.
So we can point to that's what the state did, so that's fine.
So you're not, you're allowed to expand.
Yeah. You can beyond have.
I think, I think, I think that we'll just stick with what the state has done.
I don't know how many else factors you really happen to make.
No, I.
I mean.
We have two mills.
We have born, which is already been entered.
We have born, we have the mill at, just south of Fort Corrus.
It was just the thing that just was all the rest are pretty, everybody knows what a school is or a medical facility, malls. And that's the one that could be up in, we're talking grain mills and like Adamsville.
I guess when, when push comes to shove, if, if something were to come before us, we could sort of back in to it and say, hey, does this particular instance pass the definition sniff test of a mill?
And the reality is that if you read the first part of that sentence, it's for the conversion of any commercial building. And then they give you some examples, but it doesn't include anything that's not listed there.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. I don't have a problem.
Yes. I didn't have any concern with the, I just remember the highlight events.
And these are all in response to state law changes.
State law and also some of our discussion last time. Any concern with that?
No, I think that's great.
Number four, we talked about moratorium, moratoriums, right? Number four is what state law divides. Yep. There's discussion about including schools in the moratorium. I pointed out footnote, schools are governed already by general laws, whether they can be converted.
You know, there's the missing inconsistencies there for ex creating. They start by talking about commercial buildings and then this is about industrial or manufacturing uses. And it's just, they're just dividing lawsuits over this.
Todd, do we have to respond to footnote number four here? So I propose, well, enough English for that. Right, the phrase bacon of its former use. So number five on that list is the alternative language, which is the number four footnote. If you wanted to expand it to more than just industrial or manufacturing uses was the point there. So the alternative language is any structure other than a school may be converted or has to be made in four. One year. Right, the app can be. I mean, I don't see any issue with the alternative language. It seems to be a bit more blanketing in terms of sort of able to sort of cast the net wider and sort of cover us.
And that's a good, that's a good thing because we, we want to encourage existing buildings to get new uses and not a big building.
I like some launches, so we gave some clarity.
So I'm, I'm just saying, I think that, I think that the alternative language is the preferable language because it casts the net wider and it gives us the planning board the ability to approve more if something, something that doesn't fit into the category number four.
Right.
Industrial manufacturing, but it's still worthy of conversion. And yes, absolutely, let's go with the alternative language.
Because that's just point that language is inconsistent, right? Between car number four and number one, talking about commercial buildings. Number five makes it more consistent and it has more housing availability.
Exactly.
So it's not going to change that. So does everyone agree you want the alternative language? What's up, Rosemary?
I don't have time to have coffee.
So.
Tell us. Tell us.
I, I emailed it to other one. It's page seven, zoning ordinances. Correct.
Okay. It's not, I don't have a highlighted version, I can't tell.
I was not, because it was printed in black and white.
I know.
Grayscale.
I'm sorry, it wasn't printed, it was.
It's still highlighted, it's just highlighted in gray.
Grayscale, right. I have a, I have a colored copy, which may be a tongue like Ed's color cup.
I have page seven minus seven, Dix is nine.
You want Ed's color cup? That's impossible for Dix to be number nine. I sent it to Ed as print cast.
Well, that's not.
What happened?
I don't know. I didn't print that one, Dick.
If Dick printed it himself, it may have printed differently. That's why.
When it first, first came out.
Okay.
And then use a different font.
Dick, do you have the one that's labeled at the top, draft 102125?
Yes.
Okay.
In red.
Clearly Dick has access to a public.
We don't have a.
Not, not.
Move on. Is that a yes to number, to number five over number four?
You want the alternative language? I, I think Stu and I are in favor of the alternative language here in that it provides.
Any objections you want?
I like.
All right, so Dick's on board. Cheryl.
Yes. Yes.
Rosemary?
Sure.
Bill B. Spike out there is to conform with state, state law. So Todd, can you just talk to me this particular?
Duncan.
Yes, highlighted? Yes, please. Yes. Last time we had a discussion about minimum size for a unit. We confirmed that the building official, it's one hundred fifty square feet. The first argument plus one hundred thirty for each second for the second.
Play out, no one else to pack here.
Just a question. On lines thirty one to thirty four, there's no limitation on the number of units other than minimum housing standards. So there's just not that much.
It's as many as you can fit into the building that will meet minimum housing code standards for a living unit, for dwelling unit.
I mean, we have no choice. That's state law, so it's a no binder. And you're just, this language is simply bringing it down and to conform it with our, with our.
Yeah, they, they struck out the entire previous density provision and replaced it with these two.
That's a double check. That's a lot.
Yes, it is.
Yeah. We have no choice.
Go on. I said, I don't want to stick, help remember why I might some of this on the, just to call it out for me. I'll have to make changes here, though, about building on road setbacks, items, all by state law. I, I think a good rule of thumb is if, if we are merely bringing ourselves consistent in state law, the language is literally verbatim.
You have no choice.
Yeah. I mean, I think there's a little deliberation here.
Now, this, this now wastes time discussing what we have no control.
So if we could just be specific as, I apologize, I have something in my eye. If we can just be specific and call out where it's aligned. Right here, the notarized affidavit. The general laws that we talked about. This is what the state law requires, affidavit if it's industrial or manufacturing use. I think we should make this consistent with what we just did above.
For all uses.
Yes. So the recommendation is to move away from just the specified for industrial or manufacturing use and make it all uses. Correct. Okay. For consistency. Yes. All right, DU's.
So we discussed this on back in September and I, I think, and this is a question I'm going to ask both Todd and Ashley. I think that we kind of agreed that we would like to make Tipperton as strict, as restrictive as a correct terminology, as state law allows us, allows municipalities to be with respect to the size of ADU's in particular. The size issue was something that we discussed at great length then. And I think Ashley said, yes, you do have some discretion in this area. And as I read over the language this afternoon, I thought, it sounds, it sounds very good to me. So I'm assuming that, that you and Todd picked up where we left off in our conversation and crafted some language that gives Tipperton as much discretion as we can possibly get under state law for having some control over ADU's.
What we proposed here is the maximum size, maximum minimum size, if that makes sense.
Yes, actually it does.
The maximum minimum size required by state law.
Right.
So the nine hundred and twelve hundred square feet.
Right. Remember that conversation. So I'm fine with all of that.
You can allow it to be larger if you want to. But I think what we're going to get is to amend is our accessory structures and what sizes we cloud those.
Yes.
And we deliberated that expense in September as well.
Yes.
We should have discretion there, but some discretion out of that.
And unfortunately, the state tied those together and linked them, so we need to be careful about that.
So this white footage is from the state?
For the ADU's?
Yes.
The maximum?
They say that that's what you can set it. You, you have to allow this as the minimum. And so what we did was also, we put this in as the maximum. So that's all you can get. You can go smaller, you just, you can't go bigger.
I'm just surprised that it's that large of a number.
Focus up at the state house.
So somebody could build a smaller one if they want to.
Right.
They just can't come in and say, I want a one bedroom that's, you know, seventeen hundred square feet or a two bedroom that's seventeen, can't go over the twelve hundred.
And now that's nice for me. Who would make use of these units? Would it have to be a family member? I mean, I'm so confused.
Nope.
Anybody.
Uh, well.
Functionally, might as well.
Yes.
You can come and live in my backyard.
Yes.
Functional, yes.
Yeah.
They have standards on the horse.
They have, they have three standards that you have to meet in order to be able to have one by right, but you can manipulate the standard. You can manipulate at least one of the standards that you could get, you could get around it and then you could run it to whoever you wanted.
Because once you have it, we can't take it away.
We can't take it away from you. So if you establish it on the fact that you're providing it as a reasonable accommodation for family members and then you kick that family member out and you list it as a rental, we can't do anything about that. The town cannot go back and say, hey, wait a minute, you originally established this for a family member and now you've switched that up. Then you've just put it out on the open market. The, the town can't do anything about that.
What happens here? You, you get an affordable unit and you get a promotion with a big pay raise. And you exceed the requirement, the income requirement. Do you, does it lose that status?
That depends on the unit itself. If the unit is a rental, then potentially if the monitoring agent is checking and doing their job, they're, they're part of the monitoring agent's job is to make sure that the person continues to income qualify. Um, it's different when it's a purchase. Like, we can't, we can't.
Yeah. Required tax base.
There's no way.
Once they've bought it, once they've bought it. But I mean, typically what ends up happening in a situation like that is because, because you buy, because you buy a deed restricted unit, you're, you're capped in the equity that you can gain in the house because it can't sell for any more than whatever that ceiling is. So your equity is capped at that ceiling. So if you do, you know, win the lottery, get a new job and, and greatly increase your income, you're probably gonna move on from that unit and go to a place where you can gain more equity in your house.
Yeah.
And then you free up that unit for someone else to take.
Job or.
Yeah. But that's the job of the monitoring agent is to, is to maintain that the person continues to income qualify.
Jeff, really, who is the monitoring agent?
There are certain agencies that are approved to be monitoring agents. Most of them are, are like the nonprofit CDC organizations that, that, that this, that Rhode Island Housing says are appropriate monitoring agents. Rhode Island Housing can also be a monitoring agent. But that, I don't know exactly what they have to go through to get to be a qualified monitoring agent. But there's a handful of them in the state, like Church Community Housing and the other organizations that are those, you know, that are responsible for affordable units.
I have a comment and a question about ADU size.
Yeah.
Yes, John.
Nine hundred and twelve hundred occupied space?
Doesn't differentiate in the law.
I know. And that's why I'm saying if they're, if we're looking to, uh, Stu was talking about the possible restrictions or at least discussion of that. Um, the, the, this, it has come up on a number of occasions already where garages are not considered occupied space. Or, or you're not, uh, it's not livable space. So if someone has a three-story garage, that's twelve hundred square feet. And they want to put a twelve hundred square foot ADU two-bedroom above it, they can do that.
Yes, they can.
So that's.
Which is a white foot ADU in a detached structure.
The AD, yeah, the ADU itself can be that nine hundred square feet. You wouldn't count the garage against that ADU because that garage is not the ADU. It's the living unit. It's the dwelling unit.
Right. So I just want to make that clear because people start asking questions, talking about that. That's come up quite a bit recently. Um, people are building an ADU and then all of a sudden adding a eight hundred and sixty-four square foot attached garage to it, non-livable space. So now you're looking at a, you know, two thousand square foot ADU with a garage. So, I mean.
I don't know that that would be the case.
You can't have a twelve hundred two-bedroom ADU and add a garage to it.
You can have, you can put an ADU on a garage.
But if you put an ADU on a garage, what's the difference?
Because the, the garage is the existing structure and it was, it was already there for the principal structure. It's the ADU itself that would have to be limited at that nine hundred. So you couldn't make the ADU on top of the garage more than the nine hundred.
Right.
And you wouldn't count the existing garage against the ADU. But you couldn't, I don't know that you couldn't, but I think there's an argument that you could not come in and say, I'm building a nine hundred square foot ADU and a twelve hundred square foot garage attached to that ADU.
Right. There's no language that prohibits that. An ADU is a living area, living facility.
It's a dwelling unit.
It's supposed to be accessory to the principal structure and principal uses.
There's an argument to be made there that you can't do that.
I try that every day.
Okay.
The living unit itself, like the, in totality, if they're building it, then it's, it's nine hundred.
So just to clarify, if they have a garage, I mean, if they don't have a garage for their single-family home.
Right.
They build the ADU and then attach the garage to that ADU.
But the garage is still.
Garage is still.
In theory, it's still the principal house.
Right. Gotcha.
Okay. I'm just saying that it's something to discuss. I knew you were talking about things to talk about and it's come up a number of times already. People are being, coming very creative on their options.
Sure.
Uh, ADU, garage, studio, bathhouse, uh.
Pool, pool house.
Yeah.
The question for us is what can we do about it in our own metropolitan zone?
You can put clarifying language right in there. I think that's worth.
Well, I mean, to that point, I mean, we could, I know in some extent, in, in some content, we placed examples, right? Like in, I'm wondering if this is a situation where.
Where we need an example.
You know, that, that.
No, because we also have a definition, don't forget, of accessory dwelling unit and which is actually defined by the state. A residential living unit on the same lot where, where the principal uses a legally established single-family dwelling or multi-family dwelling. An ADU provides complete independent living facilities for one or more persons. May take various forms, including but not limited to detached unit, a unit that is a part of an accessory structure, such as a detached garage, or a unit that is a part of an expanded or remodeled primary dwelling. I see you shaking your hand very nice.
I know. I, because I, I see them.
True.
Part of the accessory.
He's going to try and say them now.
I'm sure he has already.
So, well, I think what John is saying is to, to make his job easier, can we say?
It should be clear.
In Tiverton, um, um, it is not permitted to build a brand-new garage onto an ADU. An ADU.
I would say no, because that garage could be for the primary structure.
It just happens to be attached to the ADU.
An ADU cannot have its own accessory garage.
Well, let's make that clear because John is saying that that's not clear at this, at the present time.
No, he's saying that people are coming to him with that, that argument.
So if, if somebody builds an ADU and then builds a garage and says that this garage is actually for the primary house, not for the ADU, that's fine. That's permitted under state law. But if the primary residence already has a garage, can we, can we then, under those circumstances, um, prohibit a garage for the ADU? Am I getting to your issue, John?
I, I, yeah, I just started up for discussion because we've talked, we've had a few of these.
If this is already an issue in the town of Tiverton.
I mean, if they would address it. If Todd and Ashley feel that the language in the zoning ordinance is adequate, then it's a matter of perhaps empowering you a bit more to shut down those instances where people are trying to
get away with it.
Get creative, I guess is the way I put it.
I'm just looking at.
What more can we do? So the question on the table is what more can we do written documented ordinance-wise in order to either clarify more, help and, help with enforcement more?
I would be hesitant, hesitant to add more language because the state has been so specific at specific what is allowed or prohibited, towns prohibited from doing as far as ADUs and regulating that. I think the language is. Sorry, I was trying to. It is clear that an ADU is residential structure only. So if John ever brought a case to me that said this ADU is also proposing an accessory garage for that ADU, I'd say deny it. It would be fight.
Needs to be.
Yeah.
There you go. It's clear to me. I just wanted to bring it up for discussion because it's coming up more and more and more.
And you're denying it though.
Yeah, but there are some creative ones there. Like I said.
So once I bump into Roger.
That are perusing.
For trying to collaborate.
So on and so forth, you know, a barn, you know, this, this.
I, 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 I'll go with Todd's recommendation. I'm, I'm satisfied with that. But, but I think there needs to be a lot of cooperation between the planning function and the building function.
Oh, there is.
It has to, it has to be clear like Ashley said.
Well, not, I mean, sometimes a little less clarity gives us a little more wiggle room. And this, it sounds like that might be one of the situations. And I think the reality of this is that every, every municipality is sort of in the same, most of them are sort of in the same position where it's not clear and people are coming up with creative ideas and those are just gonna have to get taken one at a time. And if John gets those and brings them to Todd and I and we put our heads together and discuss it, we can come up with a, an answer that he only, we only need to do it once for every one of those creative situations. And then he has his canned responses when the, you know, the third person comes back with the same idea. It, that's just, we're gonna have to wade through it like that because it's, it's new, it's new law and we don't have case law and we, nobody knows exactly how to interpret it.
There's gonna be a lot of litigation in all of the municipalities in Rhode Island. And so over time, that will become clear and we'll have case law.
For each one you regulate, there's going to be six more that you haven't listed.
Yeah.
Yes. Sometimes you can't get it all in there and we just have to take those case by case.
Yeah, I agree. I agree. Let's move on.
Yeah. Are we? Bruce, man? Quite skeptical as she is.
Yes.
Um, all right, let's move on to section forty-four. Use is not listed in the table of uses. This is for the general laws. But we have to allow people that present the use as a similar type character intensity to present that to the town. Here we are proposing that that goes directly to the zoning order review for public care. And we'll set for the notice requirements, hearing requirements. Sorry, this?
Okay, this is. This was ready for to move.
This is a piece of regulation. See, I only talked about the size on. It's just to clarify, that's two setbacks for the, for Mexico zones. And so that's the chip one, state added, and point allowed. Now, there's, there's zoning disorder to a lot.
Two.
So it's like that can happen either. Okay?
Yep. You go, Mitch.
Um, step, wait, can you move back? Is that supposed to say main road?
Dick, it should say main road. I'm sorry. I, I made a, I made a note to myself to change.
Got it.
Main street, main road.
Got it. Thank you. Uh, there was some talk out of here or elsewhere about not protecting residential zones that are booked, commercial, industrial, business, so I added this in.
Scroll is spelled wrong.
I have no question, Todd. Does anyone else? Do you have any corrections on this?
What is it, Charlie?
This is not formally stated anywhere.
So we're eliminating and the key.
Yes.
Yes.
I'm, I'm, I'm fine with it. I've been actually finding it's very reasonable. You did your own is more than your. Or.
Sure. All right. We spent a lot of time, accessory structures, we spent a lot of time on this last September. Don't, and that changed a lot. That footnote is from last time still about quandary with accessory structures versus ADUs and sizes. And that's why you've, like, limited the size of accessory structure. Four hundred eighty square feet. I'm sure you still want that four hundred eighty square feet.
Does anybody remember sort of what the, the benchmark there was for the four feet?
Two car garage.
Two car garage.
John, thoughts? Sorry, who was on the screen? Four hundred eighty square feet maximum for, for a accessory structure or sixty percent of the principal structure?
Reducing it from that eight sixty-four number?
Yes. Oh, yeah. That makes a lot more sense.
To reduce it.
Three sixty. Eight sixty-four is just a weird random number. We don't know where that ever came from, what it was about. Are we looking to be more restrictive or less restrictive, I guess is the question? A three-car garage, I think, was the. Eight sixty-four is the.
Eight sixty-four is the.
I think that's where that came from.
So then last time around, we landed on four eighty as sort of a general guide for a two-car garage.
Yes.
And we all kind of agreed to that. We can change our mind now, but we did discuss that a great length and I'd stick with it.
And, okay. All right. Move on. I think, talked about this as well. I'm like, oof. While, while looking at something else in your ordinance, I did see that there's already a provision that allows ten-foot fences in industrial zones and seven-foot fences in all other zones. So my ask for you is what do you want to do here? Because here we have four-foot height in the front yard, six feet elsewhere. So we're not consistent.
So that seven-foot reference that you just made, was that regardless of front side or rear?
Yes.
If I remember the discussion correctly from the last time, we, we talked a lot about sort of the balance between what I would call privacy and aesthetics, especially in the front.
Yep.
Um, unless, forget, like, there was a sort of a, a limit for and if, if there was a huge amount of front range and you said, okay, if you put that, like, anything, like a fence up to the.
We're just talking about within the front yard setback. Had it, yes, the front door setback. So you could have a fence on your side, side lot line, within the front yard setback, that's four feet and twenty feet, and then it goes up to six feet there on that, you know?
I, I, I hate that image. I think that's a big improvement. I don't know what we have now. What we have now, I like to think of it as a line pass or a down or something that's going on recently.
So right now your ordinance permits seven-foot fence regardless of front, side, rear in a residential zone or in all zones.
I can think of a very highly visible example of why we need to change that to four feet.
So if we go with four feet here, do we need to?
I, I just need to.
Bring the other.
Yeah. And I just, I just want to know which number you want and I'll make it consistent.
I, I think in, again, in the spirit of balancing the privacy aesthetics, especially in that front setback, four foot max seems to be a good number. I welcome other thoughts here.
That's for residential zones?
Yeah.
Yeah, especially residential.
Yes.
And you have six feet in the other.
So it's all.
Yeah. Whereas the ordinance right now permits a ten-foot fence in the industrial zone.
And so you can put it anywhere else.
Right. So if you're gonna make the rest of the ordinance consistent with what we discussed last September?
September.
I got your votes.
So I, I think for, for B one here, right, what we're talking about residential, right? I think that my recommendation would be that four-foot height max in the front setback. Side yard, uh, shall not exceed six, uh, rear. Uh, rear yard setback, six. That makes sense, right? Like I don't see, I think that's, again, strikes a balance between privacy standards in a residential.
They can get a variance. They want something more. What did you want, Chris? Sorry.
Fence, fences are the best name for such a state.
I agree.
But, uh, no, I think it's up to the individual. In a neighborhood. But I, I understand what Sue's saying about huge fence. I think I know what you're talking about.
But the other concern though also is site.
Site distance, as you're pulling out of driveways.
That's exactly right. There's so many, none of it's done, or it's on the corners, not with speed or something.
Get some of those, yeah, those quite plastic fences. There's one on Highland that you can see from a half a mile away and is so inappropriate to the area.
Okay. So is there any concern going with what we have documented here in section B1 for the residential zones? Alright, we're good there. Um, B2, so we're talking the commercial districts, the two waterfront districts. Um, traditional main street, uh, called the form-based code areas. So we're saying no fences in the front yard setback. Rear yard setback max is six foot. Side yard max is four foot. However, the height of a fence located at any side yard setback may be increased to a maximum of six feet provided that the distance between all the buildings beside lot line is increased over the minimum required setback by five feet for every foot or fraction thereof of additional fence. Can we translate that into like?
Yeah.
What it's like versus.
If you have a side setback of ten feet, you're, if you have a four-foot fence, you know, if you go to fifteen feet, you know, go to two-five feet.
Okay.
Twenty feet from the side, six feet.
Got it. Okay.
I thought it was a stone wall. That, that would be grandfathered?
Yes. People build new stone walls though too. Generally not six feet tall.
I was just thinking, it wouldn't want to prohibit it from some of these zones. If they were just one there.
No, it's existing, right? I think Sue would take anyone down. They'll try to remove a stone wall.
And all stones are pretty historic.
In geological terms, yes.
There's very few new ones.
Yes. I can't remember ever seeing him leave Earth in my life.
My, my God.
What a horn.
Well, I'm not talking about stones coming out after the, the frost.
You mean go to a volcano?
That is, but I haven't been, so my statement is still.
A statement that you have not seen it.
I've only seen it on my TV.
Okay, fair enough.
Okay, back to business. Um, any concerns with B2 here? For the commercial waterfront and form-based code district? Okay, Todd.
Industrial?
So let's talk about three here, industrial and PDP. So Todd?
So.
We have ten foot in the other.
Correct.
Yep. Now, I'm trying to remember some of the, uh, performance criteria. Like, we talked about fencing in there. But I don't, like, certain things need to be behind fencing.
Yes.
But I don't think we go as being, go as far as being prescriptive as to the eight foot.
Set.
Fencing.
I think with certain businesses, you want a higher fence.
Yeah.
It's like they like certain things.
Ten feet, I don't know, in certain situations within industrial, like, probably makes a lot more sense.
And such a.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah. I just prepared for discussion. Okay, you make the policy.
Yeah.
Strip club highway commercial.
Well, that's.
That is allowed.
That's not.
White one fence.
Yes, but we just talked about highway commercial.
Can only be six feet.
Yeah. Oh, so does the board want ten feet in industrial and PDP zones?
My recommendation would be ten foot in industrial. I don't know if others have.
I, um, I, I'm just, I'm just concerned that our industrial zones, um, reach into some, some areas that also have residential, I'm thinking Eagle Hill Road, for example, where we see a lot of activity going on now. Um, and, and I, I'm reluctant to see ten-foot fences, you know, on, on a, you know, on a road like Eagle Hill.
What about?
What about changing it for the front?
I'll go along.
But what about going to somewhere in between, like, go, letting it be eight feet? I mean, you think of the six-foot fence and I think of somebody tall enough stands on their tippy toes. I mean, they can see over that.
Yeah.
But if you went to eight feet, you'd get a little more height where you'd screen what's behind it and maybe it wouldn't be as massive at eight feet as it feels at ten feet.
Yeah.
I don't know. Just a suggestion.
I, 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 I think that's a great suggestion and I, I ask the other teams, I don't wanna compromise in that eight rather than six, ten.
Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that. The, the other question for discussion may be the ways we're in here, we're, we're sort of just lumping front side or rear.
Sorry.
Into a single, what you do, the tiered fences.
You could allow it to get higher as it gets further away from the road.
Yeah, you, you know what I mean? So maybe side and rear is ten, front is eight.
Yep.
Yeah, something like that. I go along something.
Yeah? Oh, sorry?
I'm thinking.
Janice?
Yeah.
You want eight and ten? What do you want? Ten? Eight? Five car eight. So it's ten?
In, you know, there's large friends in my neighborhood. And sometimes I look at it and I try to look crazy. Eight, my head. Eight feet.
Does your neighborhood a buck industrial?
No.
Oh, no, I'm saying you're asking me if I want to be eight or ten.
Yeah.
In, in the industrial or PDP zones?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
You've got, getting off the fencing, you've got demands now, you're brungers.
Yep.
They're putting up stuff.
Can that put burns to, that can sound?
Pretty high.
Um, are you talking about?
Eagleville.
Eagleville.
You can hire a lot of stuff and find a ten-foot fence.
Yeah, and sometimes that's a good thing and sometimes it's a bad thing. I think it depends on how tall the building is and where it is. Sometimes eight-foot fence would be great and other times you may want the ten-foot. It depends what's behind it.
So I think it's impossible to, like, those are like, almost like, you know, case by case by case basis there. I think what we're trying to do is set a general standard that can, um, you know, be, uh, challenged. Um, if necessary.
Let me offer this. An industrial project or PD, PDP project, something will slightly come before you. Ninety-nine percent of time, right?
If that one. Which will give us flexibility to sort of deviate from said standard if the use were domestic.
Yeah.
But they come to us with bins and the next thing you know, they're.
We're just focusing on fences right now, Chris.
But would the, the bins have the density of the height?
Are you saying it's gonna be on a case by case basis there?
They could get relieved for everything.
Is she saying in front of the fence?
And plus the fencing?
Like a long-term. I don't know what type, but what we're talking about in terms of bins, but I want to try to keep on fences.
No, I mean, fence, fences, if they can come with a case of why they needed a ten-foot.
Yeah.
And we have a set of eight, they can.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, waiver on.
So the proposal on the table is to do for industrial and PDPs districts, eight foot in the front? Ten in the side and the rear?
So, true.
Stu?
Yeah, that's fine.
Cheryl?
That's good.
Janice?
Pete?
Yes.
Can't do anything about your eight-foot friends in your neighborhood? What? Dick?
I think eight foot.
All around.
A dog is unlikely to be able to jump over it if you had guard dogs, like in a commercial yard or something. Uh, again, just to lock lines of sight unnecessarily. Six. Ten foot is awful high.
What about on the side and the rear?
Yep.
I think pretty much the same thing.
Okay. So let's go, let's, eight feet all the way around. Stu?
Yes.
Chris? Mary? Dennis? Oh, Janice? Cheryl?
I'm a group one.
Does this include berms?
I'm sorry, my berms.
Does this include berms?
Um, I don't believe this includes berms. That would be very specific.
Not the fence. Correct.
Separate? We're good?
Yep. And I called the, the, uh, building department after our last conversation, they already have a formant filled out for fences. Um, but they do appreciate us making this even more specific for.
Item seven here.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. I'll just. Okay, this I need to amend to reflect what we just discussed earlier, okay? And I may just take that out and not let it show there. And I'm pretty sure this is sort of like where we left off. Design standards, this is a totally new one for us, right? And this is so that we can move the design standards from zoning ordinance, these are subdivision regulations. And try to mirror somewhat what we did with TRC and with something else. New language, so. Questions?
I had a question still on the permit. Think, do we really wanna have a price in there? Isn't it, shouldn't it be by a fee schedule? That could change over time. What do you think you're having?
I suspect you can see it there, Dave.
Yeah, number seven.
Number seven.
Oh, go back up. Go back up. Right there.
Oh, yes.
Line one and two.
John, just listen to the hardy. What you already had?
The fifty dollars could be okay on the current, you could put it on a current fee schedule.
There, there is no current fee for a fence. There is no permit required for a fence right now.
Well, yeah, but we're having that.
I think what Dick is saying is let's refer to a document that is more easily managed and updatable.
Oh, fee schedule.
A fee schedule as opposed to putting a very specific price in here that could be subject to change. If it changes, we gotta go through the whole process.
Change the ordinance. We have to go through the ordinance pro, amendment process anyways, even if we're in the, I don't know what section it is, where the clerk has the set out for, for other arguments.
But aren't building permit fees based on, aren't building permit fees based on cost?
Job, yeah.
Yeah. So that's not a set fee schedule, it's based on a cost.
That's right.
So you could do.
That's a building fee, right.
You could do this, I mean, it's a part, it's, it's a building permit. You're getting a building permit for a fence. You could apply the same fee schedule that's applied now, which is based on cost. And then you wouldn't have to put anything in here and you wouldn't have to, it would just follow the fee.
Yeah, so I think the, I think what Dick is, is, is suggesting, and I think it's a good idea, is that, yes, we wanna be able to call out the fact that we're requiring permitting, but avoid putting a specific dollar amount in here.
And just referring to the current building permit fee schedule would accomplish that. And then it would be based on whatever the cost of the fence is.
That makes a lot of sense. The fifty dollars is something for this.
I think it could still be a standardized number. I don't think it has to be the value of the, it could be either way. But again, we would point to.
Yes, it's. Yeah.
The digital. Building permit fee schedule, which is sort of the catch-all.
Yep. Charlie?
You could have been done soon.
That happens divided.
That's art.
Fences do that.
Literally and figuratively.
Yes. Back to design standards. This is the enabling legislation in the zoning ordinance, what is your subdivision regulations? Questions in service?
So, so, um, the, the way I read this is we're talking about, um, when, when people say design standards, um, they could mean, um, setbacks and dimensional as well as architectural or style or building design standards, correct? But I think that what, what we have here covers both categories.
This is a setback, that setback is, does not, this would not include setbacks.
No, but it does, because we've already spelled that out elsewhere on.
And site building design are defined in the regulations.
Right, so, but that, yes, that's what I meant to say is it, it includes both site and, uh, building design. So building design would be the architectural features. The site would be where the building is placed.
Correct.
So, um, so, so I'm, I'm fine with this, but you know, and, and what you're doing here is you're simply, we're pointing to the subdivision regulations and we haven't gotten around to that yet. Uh, we'll populate that.
No, it's done. You've had that for a while.
That was passive. We have to get.
You haven't adopted it yet.
You haven't adopted it.
No, but you've had the, the draft for a while and we broke that and I'm, I'm looking for that draft because I think we may need to just change that title because the way we organized that was into.
You had a chart in.
Well, we organized it into two different categories. There are, there are basically like design recommendations and then design requirements. And there's, so there's, there's both under each zoning district. And so I just wanna make sure that, that those two connect and that they're reflective of each other in the way that we're titling them.
Yeah. And, and I mean, the, the form-based code design standards were passed out, like that came out, then another email. Like actually.
Yeah, those, you've had those for a long time.
I just sent you the PDF actually.
You've sent me the PDF?
Yeah, just.
Of what I sent? Oh.
Yeah. Wasn't the, wasn't the word though.
That's fine.
It's terrible. I just sent her the fee schedule.
So somehow I got John's email that caught yours off.
Okay, just they, like.
So we can, we can look at these, there it is. Um, we can look at them, at the rest of what's in here. I just wanna make sure, like I said, that from a title perspective, we're making those two things match.
Okay, so let's move on to item D here. Wait first. And I actually had a comment about D3.
What? Come, this is like, like a wedding. Yes, good, that attentional.
This is the cross lock table that we did, um, which is helpful, but it's not the actual draft. I'm not lifting it. Yeah, I don't think they made it into this version actually, so. Two, with my.
Okay.
Yes.
Um, so, yes, though. D3, what radius would you like?
Um, don't we, I mean, what's our usual standard, two-hundred foot?
Two-hundred.
I don't see why we would, I mean, Sue, do you have a? Why in the case of design standards, art notice to a butters would be a different standard than something other than a two-hundred foot radius?
Yeah.
Then I'm gonna, should be two-hundred. Then I'm going to should be two hundred.
I like to tell everyone, tell everyone.
Well, I, I think there's value in consistency here as when you define a butters for those purposes.
Yeah. You're defining this procedure, everyone?
And again, procedure is consistent.
Yes.
With the other waiver.
Waiver procedures, yes, like when you grant a checklist waiver.
Yes. Okay. You're good?
Yeah.
Force might feels all good.
Yeah, I mean, that was straightforward.
Substantive lots of record, that's correction matter from existing.
We've led it.
Berger. Margin. But, so that's last time, petition's on court, so unmerge.
I, I.
Sorry.
I, I found the term unwind merger.
Yep.
Um, I look interesting. Is that a, is that a legal or a technical term that's used?
No.
No. Unwind.
That's me, I guess so.
Get a better word?
Really. I told you many times, I'm not married to anything.
No, no, that's.
Is it reverse, is reverse a merger?
So.
I didn't, I mean, I'm fine with unwind, I understand that.
I'm backing out, I'm due.
Or maybe undo is the plain language term here.
No, I'll go with unwind, I just, I just, I got my fancy one of raggedy.
It's a fancy term.
I, I thought it might be a technical term.
It's a catchstone.
Yeah.
Substantive lots of records, permanent formate, changes in the general laws.
So we have no choice there?
No. I think I tried to keep what I could from existing.
It's actually better than it was, so. To say law.
Yes.
I don't get to say that a lot, so.
It helps to find what they mean by proportion, reduction and setbacks. I, I kept, for example, your maximum height on lots less than a thousand square feet. I don't think that's inconsistent with general laws. Okay, special use permits. Oh, right. Your current ordinance requires an applicant, or subject to law, who receives special use permits. Or, or to do anything related. Yes, totally wrong. So it's been straight. Slight additions to dimensional requirements, this is, the zoning officer, this brings it up to, up to speed with current general laws.
Okay, is there, was there a particular reason for the, just the highlighting of that launching part of that?
Because that's a big portion of that block of power change.
That was a change, okay.
Well, we did talk, we did talk about this a little bit last time, the neighborhood character based on occupation. It's a, it's a new tool for people with undersized lots to build on those lots. We would have one example of that, is that going forward, John?
Yeah, they're connected to public water, I'm sure, this is, uh, I have one that's in the works right now.
If it has water and sewer.
Yes. That's required by general laws, actually state.
But like, well, second.
Cut it. Let the lawyers have a taste.
Three. And no choice.
Right. And that's on development.
What if this is a.
A lot to strike out since Jake insisted general laws.
And then everything that's put in there, is that all?
Can't say it's all straight in general laws, some of it is clarified.
Could you call their attention to anything that we.
I really wish I could. Well, the first part, portion of stop, last word.
Race, right?
Yeah, I mean, the.
I didn't have a problem with any of that.
The only, the only place where I did highlight through myself is actually section two B. Just eye one there. Um, and then I went back and because, uh, footnote fourteen says that it was, so I went, I looked up, you know, ordinance, article fourteen, section five B, right? So all we're doing here is, is pulling that from there.
Yeah.
And placing it here.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it made more sense.
Should we clear it? And I don't think this is the time or place to get it debated or litany or anything like that.
I can't. As the state screwed it up so much, it's pretty simple, you have worth removal with its own definition and standards versus quarry, which can only be grandfathered. It has its own standards by general, by, by case law called quarry. Laughing about it, right? Worth removal is permitted in certain, it's under existing ordinances, there's north removal ordinance. Right? Yes, certain areas that can be enforced, back certain parts is.
Yeah, and I know this is a very limited thing in the town of Tiverton and stuff, like, there's a lot of cases of this. I was just, sort of the, just sort of the, I don't know, phrase which I'm cart launch, but sort of the allowing of the expansion here. Um, useful, it's, like, again, I feel like that's a bigger conversation. At the age, um, here. But if, if, that's why I was like, okay, this has been on the books as is, it's not like this is that new. It's not like this isn't being proposed, this has been in the books for a while. I think if it was something we wanted to revisit, that we'd have to create the time and space to do that.
Right, and there's, there's a case right on point called Corte, which tells us, tells us how much they can limit expansion of quarry.
Okay. So it's tied to case law?
Yes.
Okay.
And this is expansion of existing licensed quarry operations.
And we only get one, we didn't stop pushing.
Thank, okay, thank you.
That. Was Mary good still? Alright, so we broke out unperformed by use in dimension, so everyone's clear.
Just legitimize, except if like this before component.
I don't know if we legitimize it.
Legit.
Sorry.
I miss.
I don't know if we're legitimizing existing non-foreign.
Because it's not a good force. You know, some of these things are not conforming and happen with few problems.
Okay.
Just my.
But the ordinance that I'm proposing here is that making them more legitimate.
It's component. Who would have a, a disrespect? Change of views.
It helps town have standards for when something wants to change, not why, just, that's looking at right now.
In the past, when a, um, say a rebound, they go on, our people don't go with them. They just jog it down a year's, you know, if it's wrong, and I go, this is.
But tax assessors assessing that's not, it's unforceable.
Yeah, but that's how it becomes, you know, but I don't like it until.
Okay, is there anything wrong with the proposed language?
Yeah, so, I mean, again, where the, the language in the ordinance provides the foundation for enforcement. Enforcement.
Begins cheap.
Whether or not it's happening is a whole different ball of wax and we're focused on the language here.
Enforcement has increased six thousand percent in the past six months.
I agree.
One month, we're in nine, nine months.
I agree.
Who did?
Um, section five. Um. Does there need to be, yes, this one, again, like, this was all carried over from previously existing.
Got it.
In special use.
Yep.
Specials.
And I don't want to change this language at all as of things presently going on.
Sure. That's understandable.
So just moving it doesn't change the substance?
No.
Okay, all right.
Let's move on.
There's always, some people confuse, right? A non-conforming use versus a use that was permitted by variance, a special use permit. We're making sure that it's out defined as to what you can do when you received a special use for variance previously versus, um, versus being a non-comformist. I, I read this, where I did, I did it straightforward. Special use permits, that's where we are now, highlighted language, had its own accord to be capitalized. Now you put plenty of work because we've unified developed a few procedures. Strike some old language that we had where we had to kibosh on every single special use that there was. And then used this out as sort of a table, corrected that, discussed that already, but in a better place and it's more appropriate how it is now. Findings and recommendations. Apply criteria for all special use permits that has, has always been there. And do that, not knowing if we can actually enforce that, but number of counts are within this general criteria.
Right, excuse me?
A number of counts level this general criteria, special use permits.
The section three.
So you use this general criteria in addition to your specific objective criteria.
Yeah.
Because these are what we would probably consider, because we don't actually know what specific and objective means from the court, but these would probably not be specific and objective. But a lot of communities, as Todd said, did not opt to get rid of them. In addition to keeping those, they then set up specific and objective use by use and left these alone.
So what for me is, so will, and I completely agree that we should keep our, um, our, um, um, the, you know, the requirements for findings of fact, those are the findings of fact. Um, in, in addition to our specific and objective criteria or our performance standards. Um, but, um, are the five that we have now, um, adequate? Are they strong enough, are they broad enough, if we make it stronger, would they have the inconsistent estate law?
Some of that is already.
See, because they're so.
Because they're not specific or objective.
They're so, you know, because different, um, boards, the planning board versus the zoning board, different people on the two boards have very different ideas about what these, what these five, um, you know, required, um, uh, criteria really mean as we have seen. And I don't know if we can make it any, you know, any clearer or more specific or, you know, because we, you know, and that, and that, I suppose adds to litigation. Because, you know, I know people will say, you have some important, they just blew that off, you know? Well, you know, is there anything we could do to tighten that up to make it more, and have other towns do?
That's what specific objective criteria are for, she was.
Yeah, so my question, just to add on to that, is all of our specific and objective criteria that we put a lot of blood, sweat and tears into, does that just, um, trump all of this? Like, is that the, I mean, why, I mean, I'm looking at these five. I mean, they're so general and high level and vague, not, maybe not vague, but.
That's why the general something broke them out.
Okay. But again, no one, this is not, these five are not going to contradict any of the specific or objective criteria that we.
Possibly, I mean, you're dealing.
So in that case, then, in that case, does the specific and objective criteria that we pulled together rule in that terms?
I don't think these will contradict your specific objective criteria, easy.
Because what I'm trying to get at is a potential scenario where, you know, for a particular use, like, we've, we've, done the arduous work to define the, the specific and objective criteria, and then the advocate comes before us and he's like, well, uh, you know, section three, A three. You know what I mean, like, throws the rest of it, like, out the window.
I, I agree with Todd, I don't think that that's going to happen, but I think what happened would be that the inverse of that is where if you, and whether this carries, who knows, if it's challenged, but if you, could you use any of these to say that whatever the specific and objective criteria you had was not enough?
Sure.
Maybe, I don't know, I think that's the problem with what they did to special use permits is they kind of broke the tool in the sense that you cannot account for every single circumstance in which a special use permit might get asked to be placed in a certain location. It's very context specific. I think a lot of the reason that people are not getting rid of these is because there is a hope and desire that they could use these when their specific and objective criteria is found to be deficient, because you couldn't possibly have thought of the scenario in front of you.
So that.
That's the hope is that this can be used in place.
So this is, this is more of a backup.
It's a safety net, more than a risk.
Yes. Yes, because we know that you, we could not have accounted for every possible circumstance in those specific and objective criteria. And if one ends up in front of you and it is a legitimate health, safety, welfare problem, hopefully this would help you in that situation.
This is the criteria of Lazarus.
Yes.
Yes. You, you have, you have answered my question.
These are the same criteria that was in the old zoning ordinance, except for it had six criteria. The only thing they did was they, these are the same five, and then the sixth one was, it shall meet the comprehensive, it shall be compatible with the comprehensive plan.
Which is the specifically.
Which they, they took out.
Specifically said you cannot have.
They being jealous of them, so.
And that wasn't a great loss anyhow, because the company is so general and amorphous that anybody can make anything out of it. And, and we certainly, or, or, we're consultants who are really good at that.
All right.
I'm, I'm fine with this.
Okay, yeah, let's move on to article eighteen.
This is about zoning certificates. This is a building or zoning official issue, first of all, right? Best of rights, I don't best of rights, it's lots of shopping store. Here, exists a best of rights section. It's not clear as to whether it's just applications, when those applications are vested versus. It's not clear as to whether it's just applications when those applications are vested versus some project after a certain phase vested. So I've wrote without both zoning ordinance and the new subdivision regulations. Because we ran into this problem in the past eighteen months of going clean. Right, so this provides us with more definition. I've also said your prior vested rights ordinance didn't make sense, invested in project, happy plan, preliminary plan approval. Which, I think, I think that's what it was, just didn't make any sense, implied that a lot of this.
Okay.
Right? Again, this is speak to applications versus approved basis. So now we're doing this. Do you have any concerns on it?
No. Because.
Did I miss anything gross? That'll end there. Pass muster for you, first service?
No, I don't.
I want your comments, because if we need to fix it.
No. You're, you're asking me now, though.
But this is, this is, but this is, this is the purpose of the workshop.
I understand.
You've had this since September at least. And I emailed it with, with small corrections last week. Okay. Something I can do then.
So actually, your side of the spot.
Yes.
With this, because you're the one that, yes, yes, put on her desk.
Yeah, I mean, this. This generally lays out very clearly what I would.
We need to know very clearly versus specifically.
Consider to be vested.
When you're vested and when you're not vested.
Yeah.
Because if there's any ambiguity, then the planning office catches hell on that.
Nope, it's very, it's very clear the way it's written to me.
So let's, let's, I, I think we should go with what we've got.
You're complete when you're certified complete.
Yeah.
I think that makes perfect sense.
Right, I don't know if anybody else.
I, yeah, I agree, I don't know how you argue otherwise, but now it says that in black and white.
The term is, is the term substantially complete?
That is a.
Is, is that a wiggle word that somebody?
Well, that comes from the law, but what we say is substantially complete is upon issuance of a certificate of completeness. So the substantially complete term comes from the, the law. And we're taking that one step further and saying that in order to be considered substantially complete, you have to be, have been certified complete.
Yes. Yes, and that means your signature in their day.
In writing.
In writing.
Yes.
That's fine. I just didn't want any wiggle room there.
That's why we brought it like this.
That's fine, I just, this is all good.
We can go on.
Yep. All right.
Swing them out, please. That gets us through one document. I see.
I don't stand. For nine thirty.
What's a yourified developed?
Fitted developed?
Yes.
That's when projects have zoning, require zoning relief and planning relief.
That's when the planning board is issuing dimensional relief in special use permits as part of the application.
So, did you want the second one, what condition?
Will let me stay here.
The subdivision regulations?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
So this is, this document represents what you saw last time that was in two documents between me and Todd. And we pulled all that into one place. So now that is in front of you as one single document and we can run through that.
You can see it.
Um, sorry, I'm trying to save the zoning before we start the subdivision. So, I think what I'd like to do is, once we have agreement here and then, and I think we, we've reviewed the design standards, as long as we're still good with those. I will, we will then make this one document, which would then be your public hearing document. So we made some adjustments, um. To definitions, we, we would add definitions from the, from this one into this one.
Are you okay, Janice?
Yeah.
Yeah, good, all right, Jan, throw it on.
Do we have any, does anyone have any questions? I don't, I don't know how you want to go through this, we can go section by section, or you can just, we can stop when someone has something.
Um, I know throughout the document, um, you have sort of notes or comments called out in the sidebar or. For whatever that is attached to, or is it worth sort of talking there?
Probably. Because I imagine I'm asking those as questions, or I'm asking for some direction.
Right.
Yeah.
You are, you are, maybe we should focus on that.
Do you?
Because I think we.
I, I would say let's focus on those and if there's anything, I mean, having read through this, but if there is anything of. A substantive nature in any of these paragraphs that is. Uh, you know, greatly enhanced or new or like.
Okay.
You know what I mean?
We went through this already, yeah.
You did.
Doesn't mean we can't make changes, but we went through it, so let's.
So your first comment, I think, is section twenty-three, eight, fees. Which is on page four.
Yeah, so what this says is that the fees are contained in the checklist, that's, that's not actually true. Um. The fees are not actually in those checklists, there's a separate fee document.
So.
Right?
Fee document.
There's a separate fee document.
Yes, there is.
That contains the fees. Um, but.
It's a fee schedule.
That document and the fees have to be set by the council.
Correct.
But that document just kind of lives, um, outside of anything.
Is it referenceable in some way, shape or form?
I mean, we could do it the same way that if you go to the next section where we've done twenty-three, eleven, which is the checklist under C, we have form.
Yeah.
Those are forms.
Yes.
Um. I mean, we, we could make that of just a form, a document that's just retained within the town and then it's actually referenced in the regulation and it can't get changed unless the.
Well, it, it looks like we already have a particular fee schedule called out here in form D, so what's the harm in creating a form E?
Yep. I don't think there is more.
Trying to standardize it and make it easier for folks to cross-reference.
Basically. So we can certainly do that, we can just add it to the section below. So we'll take out this language that's highlighted and we'll just make a fee document in the section below and we'll. Call it that. And we'll give it a number and then it'll live like the other ones.
Okay.
Um, so. I'm not going to stop unless you.
No, keep going.
Tell me.
No.
Um.
See.
We did add, and again, Todd, we need to talk about the numbering.
Yes.
Because we have to either renumber everything or renumber.
So, you stop right there. So, D. Um. Uh, I, I have no concern with the language here. My concern is just making sure that everything is working properly of the website, like all of the checklist and forms. Those links are working, you're going to have PDFs, like all of that sort of stuff.
And I know the, the website has just changed, so it may be problematic at the moment, I don't, I don't know where things are with.
I opened up all the, all the attachments.
You did. And they opened.
They opened, no problem, they were, they're accurate.
And I just want to address quickly the website. When, on the website, when it. It was carried over from the old website, I mean, nobody noticed it, but there was a section on there that talked about a five-year-old facility being exposed. We have no knowledge of any of that, okay, again, that was carried over from the old website. Yeah. And nobody picked up on it, so.
That is sort of news.
Ed went back, but Dave Roberts was able to pull the old website, the oldest quarters, the new one that was there.
There, there was, because for the.
So that was a leftover from a long time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's not current, okay?
It's gone.
And when did the new site launch?
Uh, last week.
Last week.
So if you've got any questions about that, that was just carryover from the old website, we have no knowledge about any such project, okay?
What, are there more decisions to go on to the new website too?
There's a lot that has to be done, right?
There's only one.
There is a great deal that has to be done, but that's a different conversation.
Yeah. Just wanted to put that up because you have a recent question.
I mean, when we were talking about the fee schedule, I was biting my tongue because. No, because we really should review, we have to make sure that our fees are, are, um. Covering our costs, but that's a different conversation from what we're doing tonight.
Um, so we did add a section twelve, which is waiver of checklist items, this basically just tells an applicant if that's what they're asking for, this is how this, that's how it's done.
Mm-hmm.
Bye.
Uh, let's, the next one is. Everything I'm scrolling through is just where we've added references to specific checklist to the stages of review. We updated the final language to reflect state permits. Um.
Um, section D there, um, their final, twenty, section twenty-three, twenty-four, I'm sorry, twenty-two, thirty-four. Item D.
Expiration?
Yes, the two years to.
That's to reflect, that's to be consistent with state law.
Okay.
That was changed a long time ago.
Okay.
And because we were just talking about checklists, we're all clear that we have existing checklists. There are a number of items on there that say prior to preliminary plan approval, and you all understand, planning department does not require submission of those items certified incomplete, correct?
Right.
And there are some items, because of recent changes in state law, for example, DEM permits that are, that were required by the checklist, that they don't require.
Can be forced.
Yeah.
Until when, when they're actually allowed to, but they still certify complete without those, you all understand that, right?
We, we discussed that at length with a particular use case that our last meeting.
Just make sure everyone's aware, because there's been a lot of changes and. I want us singing all the same song.
But if it's not required until the end, then why don't we move it?
Thank you, Dan, we're going to do that, because I did those.
We, 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 they make crazy. They just say N.
You think it drives you crazy.
They say N A or whatever.
But what ends up, what ends, what ends up happening when you, when you, when you do, when you write a checklist item like that, and it's, it's the first time I've come across this. You, I can't certify an application incomplete because they don't provide it, because it says prior to approval, which clearly indicates that you can go before the board without it. You just have to get it at some point before they give you a decision. And then Ed and I are chasing people to make sure that things are getting submitted after they're already in front of you, after you're hearing an application and after the time clock to make a decision has started ticking. So it's, it's, it's something I'd like to get rid of, when we revise the checklist, which we will, that will go away. It's, it's either on the checklist or it's not, you, if you, if it's on the checklist, you have to give it to be certified.
But planning office has been consistent and it's dealing with checklist.
Sure.
Um. I'm scrolling at the same time that you're scrolling, so I'm just trying to keep up with you. Page one.
Thirteen?
Thirteen?
I haven't run across a comment, all right, so I have a comment on page sixteen of the actual document, which is. Sixteen.
Um, I actually, before you get to page sixteen, on page fifteen, I've called out a comment.
Page fifteen?
Yes.
Okay.
Page fifteen, item B four. So, it says historically significant structures besides this listed on federal or state lists of historic places. My comment was, do we have instances where you might have, do we have municipal lists? And if so.
The municipal list includes the state and federal.
Okay, so there's, okay, so that's consistent, so we're covered by saying federal, state.
No.
No, because.
We have more than what the federal and state has.
The municipal.
Has more.
It has what the federal and state has plus more, I think is what I heard.
Correct.
Yes, that's correct.
I know, I know, I always ask and try to ask about semiters.
Do you want to add the word municipal to that list?
I just, I, I want, I want to ensure coverage, but I want to make sure that it, I. I don't know the extent to which it's, that list is defendable from a municipal, like what is, what is.
Been on the town website and all the building departments have had it and the tax assessors added since twenty, twenty sixteen.
Um, this is only asking to be considered.
We, we have specific, the, the town has adopted, the town's historic preservation advisory board has adopted, um, the, the, a, a list. That exceeds the listing of historic structures in the state list, which goes back to nineteen eighty-four.
Eighty-three. Eighty-three.
Eighty-three, and, and, and was never meant to be a comprehensive list. And also what the, what the feds have are basically, um, listings of the national historic register districts buildings. Um, the, the historic preservation advisory board put another list together, um, which, and did show on the basis of very specific criteria. Not only age, but architectural significance and, um, and any, uh, significance related to things that happened there in history. And all of that is, is based on, um, on, on. Historic protocols that are, that are widely used. Um, but I don't know what our, the legal status of the municipal list is, that's what I'm saying, I, I don't know, we. We did the best job we could, we did it seriously, we do have criteria, we can explain why we did things, we can, you know, show references to preserve Rhode Island and. Um, you know, and, and the state, um, um, historic preservation and heritage commission. Um, but, but I don't know what the legal status of our list is.
It was an action item that the board took on.
Because we never asked, we never asked the town council to approve.
Comprehensive plan.
Okay, well, if that's the case, then, and that's why.
So I'm not sure it's, it's an official municipal list.
It's defensible, and, and, and if we look at the language here, it's should consider, it's not a must, it's a, you, you know what I mean, so.
Mm-hmm. You're just asking them to consider the, the locations.
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
If it's a should consider, then as municipal, would be my recommendation.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then they can turn around and say, hey, your town council never accepted this.
It was a, it's in a comprehensive plan that we had to do that.
Yeah, but we never, we never submitted it to town council because we didn't want to.
So with that covered, actually, your next note is.
I think I already answered my own question. I think I already answered my own question there, but I'm just making sure by going through here quickly that.
It seems like they could put it on the local, put it on the tax card to get around it for people who said, well, nobody ever told us that the, that you guys listed this. Well, that, you got the criteria. You asked me over there.
So Ashley, you're trying to determine whether or not.
I've answered that question.
Still no question.
I maybe I am confused that I didn't.
I may start. I mean, you do have a secondary note here that says delete this section.
Then this is not the most recent. All right. I need to go back and look at that.
Okay.
I think the answer is yes, move it to design standards.
I think we already did that.
I should already have design standards for this.
I, it's been so long. I need to go back and remind myself, but let me, I'm gonna write myself a note.
So we, 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 we do have a written design standards, which are just, um, advisory and not mandatory for the PDP. And that goes way back to when we adopted the PDP.
Yeah, but we, we, I have a document that I know, I shouldn't say I know, but I think I gave everyone that has all the districts.
Yes, you did.
This one either just about two days ago? No. You've had that for a long time.
And it's quite extensive.
And it, it goes beyond that version that's just the form-based code and it goes into commercial, it goes into general, commercial, industrial and all. And that's why I made this note to myself, but let, I just, I need to go, it's been so long. I need to go back and remind myself.
That's fine. So you don't need our advice. You just kind of go back there.
If I can confirm that all of this already exists in that document.
You can delete.
Then I can delete this.
Yep.
If it doesn't exist exactly, I will mirror this language into that section and delete this.
Yes. Yes, because all of that should be together.
Be in one place.
Do you have any question?
I didn't really sure.
By what?
Signage.
Let's just separate, separate, like zoning.
I understand. You have it early. Well, there's a, there's a section on signage in the zoning ordinance.
And then the PDP has certain.
I'm looking at the subdivision one that you gave a couple of days ago and it just brought to my attention. Which one that I gave you a couple of days ago? Cause I didn't give anybody anything a couple of days ago. On the subdivision regs. The document that this one that we're in?
It's opposite date of.
We got two documents removed the other day.
Yes.
Two days ago.
She reset documents.
Yeah, you said the old one and I didn't see any limitations on signage.
Which one?
Well, there's a whole sign ordinance. Yeah. That has a bond, it comes like. What happened? It's, it's existing. You have an existing section in the zoning ordinance? The, the zoning revision committee will, has the sign section on the list. But the ones with the subdivision too. I don't think you have any signage requirements in subdivision.
Would you for the PDP?
In the subdivision regulations?
In the PDP design guidelines.
Right. But she's referring to sign requirements in the subdivision regulations that I'm not sure what you're referencing. I don't, I'm not aware of that.
I don't think there are any form-based code has form-based code.
Page eleven on the bottom, it has signage. Which page?
Page eleven.
Eleven. In this document that we're in right now?
Yeah.
No.
No. In the subdivision regulations.
The design standards.
One twenty-two, twenty-five.
Design standards that what has to ask, which you don't believe are complete.
I don't believe this is complete. And where this language came from is from the form-based code. That's what we did is this entire document of design standards that is referencing the form-based code, we pulled from the form-based code and put it into the subdivision regulations. We didn't change, we changed very little, if anything, in terms of what those standards were. But there is a newer version of this that has the additional districts in addition to the form-based code. So any signage language in here came from the zoning ordinance, came from the form-based code section.
So just to try to connect some dots here, I, I see what you're looking at here. I've pulled it up. What Rosemary is referring to in terms of page eleven is the document titled FBC Design Standards twenty-five underscore O two nine.
Yeah, yeah. It says FBC in that title, I don't, I don't think, because it's, I'm seeing a lot of things lately. There's no limitation on, on number of signs on properties.
But for the purposes.
That's, I know, I know.
For the purposes of our discussion right now, that's a separate, this is a separate document. We haven't gotten to reviewing that. We're still back in to running my subdivision regulation amendment document. Correct. So.
But just to be clear, in addition to what is in here on signage, there's a whole sign section in the zoning ordinance. So.
Right.
It could be that what you're looking for in here that's not here is in the sign ordinance. All right. So I'm gonna double check on the commercial and industrial design. I think this will become a lot clearer when all of this is pulled into one document, which is the next step.
So this is among the ordinance, so Article seven, slide regulation. Is to, which do you hear from Ashley, the zoning?
It's on their list to do.
It's on the, by law, less than.
Um, so the next section is just mimicking Todd's language that went into the zoning ordinance about the vesting vested rights.
See this page just.
Yep.
Do you want to talk about this comment here?
Um, I'm rereading it and trying to remember I was referring to. So we would need to have two, we, the idea is that we would need two checklists for DPR that you don't currently have that exist. You don't have a development plan review checklist in the subdivision regulations because it was previously housed in the zoning ordinance.
Okay.
And that was actually not, that, the checklist was sort of like embedded into the regulation itself. So that what we would propose to do is to give you two, we'd need to develop those two checklists, which will be relatively similar to minor land development because it's basically identical and the, the thresholds for being in one or the other are not that different, if not identical.
Alright. So without these two checklist, these two DPR checklist right now, do we have a deficiency or a gap that's being exploited?
Uh, not exploited, but there is a deficiency there. The good news is that, um, I mean, I can send anything that I might consider as a development plan review to minor land development and there are checklists over there.
Okay.
So it's not that big of a deal at the moment.
And I'm just trying to understand the urge to see with which we need to or we don't need to create these two new DPR checklist. You know, from a prioritization perspective, like, I mean, should we like, and once you create those checklist, do they need to come to the board for review or is that just?
No, Ashley, that's raising, hold on, hold on, hold on. You're raising a good point because what we should do is, well, I guess there's two ways of looking at it. We can create the new checklist for the development plan review and would add them to section twenty-three, eleven as a listed checklist. Alternatively, since we're revising all of this anyway, we can make checklist C and D, minor and development plan review. And then we wouldn't have to have a whole nother set of checklist. It'll be almost identical, if not identical. The, the practice that we use in the office is that you have the ability to tell us that something is not applicable. And if you give a legitimate reason for it, we will not use that to hold you back from being certified complete. Um, which we think is a reasonable approach to doing it. The, the idea with the checklist is you need to, they need to be looked at as the largest and most expansive and intensive use possible under that category of land development should capture everything that you would want to see. And when you don't have something that rises to that level of review and you have a lesser impactful application that still falls under the same category, the department has been as flexible as humanly possible to say that's a legitimate reason to not have this item. And therefore we will not hold, an NA is an acceptable answer.
Got it. Okay. So I would, I mean, personally, I would trust your recommendation to incorporate, sort of expand and incorporate check, existing checklist C and D to cover plan of the PR or DPR.
DPR.
Um, and do it that way.
Nice table.
And it seems to be more intuitive and user-friendly for folks who are going through the process.
Okay.
Okay, great.
So then we don't need to make those checklists, which is awesome.
Um, top of page nineteen. Is your next set of comments here?
Are you saying?
Section twenty-three ninety-one.
Uh, nineteen.
Okay. Can I ask a just a general question about DPR before we, you know, we're on, because you're kind of walking on already. Um, the state did make some changes, correct, to DPR maybe two years ago. And, um, and I'm just wondering, um, uh, are, are we on top of that? Should we be amending our zoning?
It's already done.
It's, it's already done. Um, that's right. We did it a couple of years ago. Um, and, and did we do anything in the subdivision regulations? I don't think we ever did. Did we?
Put DPR into the subdivision.
We took it out of zoning. We, we enabled it in zoning.
I remember that now. I, I do, I do.
And we moved it all over to subdivision.
I remember that.
Yep.
So there's nothing much more that we need to do there. And it is, and it is very clear what falls under DPR and what does not.
It's entirely not clear by state law.
That was gonna be one of my issues because I, I can recall some, some dispute between the van, I, I think you know, Sue Gill, when she was in A O and the building department about what is DPR and is not DPR.
It doesn't really matter.
And they disagreed.
It doesn't really matter anymore because DPR mimics minor land development entirely.
Entirely.
Process, in time clock, in decision, you know, in the time you have to make a decision, it's, it's the same.
Yeah, you're, you're, you're refreshing my memory. Yeah, we, we, we discussed all of that quite a lot, quite a long time ago.
And the, the, the definition of what, what is qualifies as a minor land development and what qualifies as a development plan review is almost identical.
Yeah. They added now the oversized lots to minor.
Yes, yes. But that, I'd look at that differently because that's a subdivision.
Okay.
So a land development project is distinctly not a subdivision of land. It is just a development project and it is almost identical to development plan review.
Yeah.
Dave, thank you. You, you've answered my question.
Okay. Um, so I think these are just notes to myself that I need to just make sure that these things match because we've created the whole new section above about checklists. And I just, those are just notes to myself.
Okay. I don't see any other notes.
So that is finally all.
Was there anything in, in the Article seventeen conservation development that was?
That's already changes made in the zoning ordinance as to who own the property.
Okay. Alright. Two dots. So just a time check, we get about twenty-two minutes, twenty-three minutes here until nine. If I look back on the agenda here. That puts us to agenda item C, discussion on other amendments to the zoning ordinance and subdivision regs that are required by amendments to the general laws or that are needed to clarify existing ordinances or regulations. Catch all?
Yeah.
Yes. Alright, safety net. Okay. So we got through everything?
I think so.
It's raining success, Rosemary, that we got through this.
Oh, is it raining outside?
You can, don't know, but in here, it's sunny. Yeah, okay. Okay. So what is, what is the intention, um, concerning the subdivision regulations?
Everybody knows that we, we, the planning board, um, uh, adopt our own subdivision regulations after, you know, in the context of a public hearing. Um, we don't have to go to town council. They have authorized us already to do our own subdivision regulations. So that should be a fairly simple process. Are, are you, um, does the leadership intend to bring that back? Piecemeal or all at one time? Um, I'm gonna suggest piecemeal.
I may. I would suggest that we ask the chairperson to put on the November sixth agenda, recommendation to the town council on the zoning ordinance amendments, so they have to handle the public hearing for that.
And, and, and that's been going to town council, um, incrementally, you know, step by step by step, because we don't want to overwhelm them with too much.
Just for these zoning ordinance amendments.
With the zoning ordinance amendments, but with the subdivision.
We're gonna get that right now. We've already authorized, we've already got staff to categorize that when we're ready.
Right.
What, and where, collectively are ready.
Right.
I think that you could, if Ashley agrees, it might be able to go on into December five agenda, what a public hearing. And I said that this requires three weeks, so it's ratified.
And then we would take up all of this that we've just discussed tonight.
The subdivision portion is that right?
Yeah.
And, and, uh, and, and we're not finished by any means, but you know, we, you know, that would be an update of a big chunk.
It's the next tranche. So.
It's the next tranche, exactly.
I would, I would guide staff to get the zoning ordinance amendments discussion on the six, the agenda for November sixth, so that we can talk about getting it advertised, so it's the town council, so forth.
Well, November sixth, you can have your public meeting on the zoning ordinance amendments to make your formal recommendation to the town council.
Okay.
On the zoning ordinance.
Just the zoning.
Right. And then December five, you can have your public hearing on the subdivision.
Do we have enough time before November sixth?
Yeah, you got to advertise that.
Just an advisory.
Oh, okay. Then we should absolutely. Okay. And then in December, we'll take up the, the, the public hearing for the subdivision.
Correct.
Okay.
That should, well, I can do enough time to put subdivision regulations together.
For when?
December.
December two.
Yeah.
Oh, is it December two? I've been saying it wrong. Oh, is it December two? I've been saying it wrong. Yeah, we should, we have those ready three weeks before when it's advertised, right?
Uh, yes. What is that giving? I mean, there, that piece of it is together, what I have to figure out is the.
Ed will probably advertise about November sixth.
Yeah. Because I'd have to, I'd have to, um, say, yeah, I mean, three weeks back down from December second is better than December eleven. One, two, three.
What the, how many times I have to schedule?
I have to, yeah, you have to do the, um, you have to do the thirteenth, so it's due on the tenth, November tenth.
It's due, oh, because it'd have to be on the third.
Same.
It'd run the thirteenth, twentieth, twenty-seventh.
But does it have to be three full weeks?
No, that's fine, thirteen, twentieth, twenty-seven advertising.
Okay.
Consider it, yeah. They actually say the third week could be on the day of the hearing.
Okay.
Just doesn't make sense.
Um, are there any other next steps we need to recap? Okay, okay. Any other comments, questions from the board? Um, alright, so before I end, I just want to say thank you to Todd and Ashley for the continued effort here. This is grueling, detailed work.
I thought it's essential.
Incredibly essential, so thank you guys for doing that. So, um, seeing nothing else, I'll close the workshop.
Okay.